Too fast. Don't let anybody speak, especially the gentleman. Make it short, but you don't let them say anything.
Good evening, everyone. We're about to start our meeting. Welcome to the February 11th, 2020 meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have roll call?
Councilmember Agajanian.
President.
Divine.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Garpetian.
Here.
Mayor Najarian.
Here.
Councilmember Divine, would you lead us in our flag salute?
Absolutely. Please stand. Hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Please remain standing for tonight's invocation. Pastor John Aitken, the second Living Stones in Sunland Tahanga Seventh Day Adventist Church.
Let us bow our heads for prayer. Lord God, thank you so much for the opportunity to be together this evening. Lord, give us wisdom and give us openness. And thank you so much for all the cultures that enjoy this community. Lord God, we ask that you bring harmony and peace to us. In your name, amen.
May we have your report?
The agenda for the February 11th, 2020 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Wednesday, February 5th, 2020 on bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. And what's the next item?
Presentations and appointments.
Mr. Galanian.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. Regular Housing Authority and City Council meetings for February 18th, 2020 have been canceled. The next regular meetings are scheduled for February 25th, 2020. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Is Christine here? Okay, so we had some, we had a member of our office who will be giving an update on the election process. She's on transit, so we will continue to the consent items.
Four would be consent items, following our routine and may be acted upon by one motion, any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed.
I'll move the consent calendar.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian.
Yes.
Divine.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Garpetian.
Yes.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes. What is the next item?
Next item would be City Council and staff comments.
Start with my left, Mr. Garpetian.
I'm gonna wait until, I have some comments about the nomination, not nominations, the contributions and stuff like that for, for...
During the election presentation?
Right, yeah, I will wait for that.
Okay. Thank you.
All the IEs that are coming in and...
Okay, Mr. Agajanian. Ms. Divine?
Yes, I have two. I'd like to ask staff about Rockhaven and about, you know, we just had these recent storms that were so violent, the winds and the rain, and were any precautions taken at Rockhaven to protect the different buildings?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, Councilmember Divine, each season prior to the winter season and rainy season, and this year, as you know, has not been a very wet year, although we've had a couple of wet storms coming in that were, I think, more significant than others. But every season at Rockhaven, we do take precautions as it relates to making sure that the buildings, especially the roofs that are not in the best of shape, precautionary measures in terms of having tarps placed on the roofs. And so each season, we do that by means of being cautious and trying to make sure that the buildings are as well preserved as they possibly can be based on the condition of Rockhaven as a whole.
Thank you very much. I also wanted to mention that I went to the book signing of Mauro. This was Mary Najarian's book, and it's fantastic, and it was a lovely occasion. And she read a chapter, and she's a beautiful writer, and what a contribution this is to not only the Armenian community in Glendale, but the entire community, because it gives us all insight into what her childhood was like in Aleppo and moving forward. So I just want to congratulate her on this wonderful occasion. You know, a lot of us dream of writing a book. That's been one of my dreams, and I doubt if it'll ever come true, but she's managed to accomplish that, and that is a huge accomplishment. So I just want to congratulate her and mention to all of you that if you can get a copy of this, it would be a really beautiful read. So, thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Divine. On behalf of the author, I will thank you for such kind words. I have a announcement, and then we're gonna, I see our election specialist with us. I would like to place on the agenda the nomination of Nina Jasmadarian to the GWP Commission for the meeting in two weeks. Thank you. Now, Ms. Powers, thank you for joining us. I asked you just this morning to give an update on the election procedures, and you graciously took time out of your day to prepare it and to spend your evening with us, so I will turn it over to you.
Thank you so much, Mayor Najarian, members of council staff. What I wanted to go over with you today is vote-by-mail ballots, just because they are popping into folks' mailboxes. Things are a little bit different, so I just wanted to bring, this is my own vote-by-mail ballot, that they will come in an envelope that looks like this, and it will be a folded-up stack of papers with an "I voted" sticker and the return envelope. Once you open this up, this is your actual vote-by-mail ballot, and it's a lot larger now. It's not the small Scantron type of forms. So the first page will have instructions on it, and then from there, it'll actually proceed to your official ballot. And as we know with SB 25, the first race on here is the local race, so first you will see your city and local elections, and then it will end minus six pages. It'll end with a presidential race on there. And then what you do is, once you fill these in, you fold these pieces of paper up, you sign and seal this envelope, and you return it. And I'll go through some of that process with you now. So all registered voters in LA County do have the option to vote by mail. Those who are permanent vote-by-mail voters should be getting, as I am, should be getting their vote-by-mail ballots between February 3rd and February 25th. Ballots have to be postmarked by Election Day, March 3rd, and received within three days after Election Day to be processed by the county. Those who are not permanent vote-by-mail voters can request a vote-by-mail ballot by completing an application that can be found at lavote.net, which is the county's website. Now, for those who are no-party preference voters, because this is the presidential primary election, they can receive a ballot without, they will receive the ballot without the U.S. Presidential candidate unless they do one of two things. So those who are no-party preference voters, if they want to vote for candidates who are American Independent, Democratic, or Libertarian Party, they have to check the box in the vote-by-mail online application and select the desired party's ballot that they want to vote in. If they want to vote for candidates in the Green, Peace and Freedom, or Republican Parties, they have to change their party affiliation by reregistering to vote. And by when they reregister, they can check the box to receive a vote-by-mail ballot. Now, however you get this vote-by-mail ballot, once you have it, here's how you return it. You have a few different ways. You can return it by mail, and remember that no postage is necessary. You can return it in person at any vote-by-mail dropbox location. We currently have a secured ballot box in the City Clerk's Office in City Hall, and the county is in the process of installing two outdoor dropboxes, one outside Central Library and one outside Grandview Library. And then once the vote centers open up as of February 22nd, you can drop off your signed, sealed envelope at any vote center in LA County. Residents can go to glandalevotes.org to see vote centers in the Glendale area and lavote.net to see all the county locations. There are some important things to keep in mind when you're returning your ballot. Voters must sign the eligibility oath and date the vote-by-mail return envelope, and that's the front of their envelope, before submitting their ballot. Every signature is verified before the ballot is cleared for counting. If a signature is missing or doesn't match the one on file, the county will get in touch with the voter and allow them the opportunity to provide a valid signature. So for those who send in their ballots but forget to sign the envelope by chance, they will receive a document from the county. It's called the unsigned ballot statement, and they will ask for your signature. And voters have to return that within eight days of Election Day so that their vote can be verified and counted. So if they don't respond to that, then their vote won't be able to get processed. Additionally, voters are advised that they are responsible for how their vote-by-mail ballots are returned and with whom they entrust their ballots. The county clerk recommends that voters return their ballot to either a mailbox, an official dropbox, or a ballot box. Voters who can't return their own vote-by-mail ballot can designate any person to return their ballot as long as there is no compensation involved for that individual group or organization returning the ballot. It's important to note that voters should not at any time hand over a blank vote-by-mail ballot with their signed envelope to any group or individual that may make such a request. One new important thing that the county has offered now, and Aram, if you can go, oh, you're there, thank you. If you go to glandalevotes.org, we have a vote-by-mail section, and it's on, when you go to the main page, it's on the right-hand side of the page. When you click there, you can get the application for the vote-by-mail ballot, but there's also a new feature that the county has called ballot tracks. It's tracks with an X. And what you can do is you can get automated alerts via text message or email on the status of your vote-by-mail ballot. So the way you can track those pair of shoes from Amazon, you can now also track your vote-by-mail ballot through the county. And so they will tell you every step of the way where your ballot is. So for those who send those back, they can know that their ballot got securely to the county. So that, you can go there, and it'll take you to a registration page. You'll leave the Glendale Votes, the city website, and it'll look like this. And then you sign up, and then it takes you through the process. So now, those who need an emergency vote-by-mail ballot, so if you miss the deadline to request a vote-by-mail ballot after February 25th, there is an emergency deadline, and they can return that form to the county. It's at lavote.net. There's an emergency vote-by-mail ballot request form, and they can submit that. Now, for those who have completed their vote-by-mail ballot, they've signed and sealed their envelope, they mail it in, but they have changed their mind. They've had a change of heart, or they realize they made a mistake. They can call the county election office to request a new vote-by-mail ballot. They can call 1-800-815-2666, pick option two, to request a new vote-by-mail ballot. The county will then issue a new one and suspend the original one. But it is important to note that this can only occur up to a certain period of time. Starting February 18, the county is gonna start processing vote-by-mail ballots. They will be separating the envelope from the actual ballot, and once that happens, they don't have a way of tracking which one is your ballot, because your name is not on your ballot. That concludes my report. I do also want to let you know that the city has made these mailers. These will go to every single residence in the city of Glendale. We'll also have it at our counters. It gives you information about the multitude of changes that are occurring with this election. It will direct folks to either glandalevotes.org, our site, or lavote.net. Those are basically the two main websites that folks need to go to to get information about the election, and this is translated into the major languages that we translate all our election material into. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and we may call you up the week following next to give us a refresher on the voting locations, even though by that time, voting will have started for the in-person voting.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Mr. Garpetian.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Powers.
Thank you. Maybe for the staff, I wanted to know for the 11th day of voting, are we prepared to, because we know that it's gonna be long lines and many people are participating, so we have six polling, voting stations, voting centers that's open 11 days before, and all of them will be open four days before the day of elections. Am I correct?
Yes.
So is the county staffing every single polling station? We have no staff over there, or we are going to have staff just from the city side to answer questions as well?
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, Councilmember Garpetian and Ms. Powers can fill in the blanks if I don't cover all the items. As you stated, there are a number of voting centers that will be open in the city of Glendale. The county of Los Angeles is running this election and not the city of Glendale, and the county will be staffing the voting centers. We will send city staff. Ms. Powers and a couple of staff members will be going to a training session this coming Saturday for the actual vote centers, and we will have a number of staff members from the city of Glendale who will be available, as they were in previous elections, to provide any sort of assistance that may be necessary at the polling centers. And they will be roving amongst the different sites in terms of issues that may come up, any sort of assistance that the county may have, et cetera, but they are not poll workers. City staff members are not poll workers, they never have been, but they have always provided assistance and dealt with any issues that may come up during an election. I don't know if Ms. Powers has any...
Sure, so as far as the volunteers, because we had so many poll workers that they were experienced in former way of elections, and everything has changed, so is there any training for them that county is doing? Is it this week?
It's been happening, Councilmember Garpetian, at various points in various parts of the county. The city of Glendale offered up the civic auditorium to the county, and they've been holding trainings, I think through February 7th, and the trainings are fairly extensive. They go from 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM, so people spend an entire day learning about the various processes, which is, it's a little bit more than the average poll worker training. And every vote center location will have county staff, not just poll workers that have been recruited to run the e-poll book and help out with troubleshooting, but they will have dedicated county staff at each vote center location. And we, as staff, will have a contact person at the county, so if any issues arise at any vote centers in Glendale, we can communicate that information easily and offer whatever assistance we can to help resolve the issue.
And who made this mailer?
That mailer came from the city of Glendale, from the Public Information Office.
Because this doesn't say anything about the new voting system, that how to vote with the, do we have any...
Videos?
Videos?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Where are they?
We have a number of videos that are available. They're on the website, they're on YouTube, they can be accessed in a number of different ways, but the website is the easiest, I think, place to go to be able to access the different tutorial types of videos that are available.
Okay.
And we did translate videos as well.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments?
No.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on to the next item, please.
Next item would be community event announcements, three-minute portion, and the three-minute general public comments, which you, I think, Mayor, you do have two cards.
I have a card from Tamara Movsesian.
And, Mr. Mayor, members of council, as Ms. Movsesian is making her way up to the dais, I just wanted to clarify what I had said regarding Rockhaven. Staff texted me as well and said, make sure you say that they also go in and patch areas of the roof at different intervals throughout the year, so not all buildings would have tarps on them if they don't need them. They do get patched so that the effects of the weather are not as extensive as they would be without the patches, just for clarification purposes.
Do we have a report coming forth on Rockhaven?
For Rockhaven?
Status?
I'm sure we will have something fairly soon.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Tamara Movsesian.
[speaking Armenian]. 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 [speaking Armenian].
Are you? She just wants to look at the book. But, Mr. Garcia, I was a little slow in this process. We are obligated to translate that, are we not? Is it fair to everyone else who does not speak Armenian, both on the dais and in the, my Armenian's not that great, anyway, I got about half of it, but are we not under an obligation to do so?
No, if you recall, the policy has been that we provide a translator, somebody requests it beforehand, or brings their own translator with them to translate, and then we have to, obviously, we have to give them double the time for that purpose, but they're not obligated to request translation.
And we offer translation to Ms. Movsesian, and she refused it.
She refused it.
Correct.
Well, I'm just gonna, just briefly, in a sentence or two summarize, she's pointing out the fact that many tenants, many landlords in Glendale are accepting Section 8 vouchers and charging a surplus in cash to the tenants for the right to lease, the right to rent the apartment. She said something about you too, but I wasn't quite certain about that.
I'll say, obviously, that'd be a violation of federal law. If we had a viable complaint about that, we'd follow up as with housing, as we'd have to.
So if we could instruct our utility infielder Vlad, who does so many things for us in the city, to explain to Ms. Movsesian where and how to make a complaint about the allegations that she brought forward. You okay with that, Vlad? Thank you, appreciate it. Next speaker is Lucic Gazarian. Takmanich Guzes, do you want an interpreter?
[speaking Turkish].
Okay. And here he is, Vlad, thank you. So please explain to her to speak for a few...
She tells me I'm familiar with her case. She wants to get her $500 back from her former landlord. She used to live in an apartment, and she did change her floors. She put hardwood floors, and the landlord made her pay $500. Now she wants to get that $500 back. I went ahead and explained that this is going to be a civil matter, and she would have to go through civil court if she goes to get that money back, and we, unfortunately, the city cannot get involved in this matter.
Is that correct, that the city cannot get involved in that matter?
It does sound like a civil dispute to us.
And did you explain to her that the City Council does not have jurisdiction to force her landlord to return funds to her?
Mayor Najarian, yes, I did explain that we do not have an authority. Since this is a civil matter, this is, this has to be handled by civil court, and we have no authority to take the charges against the landlord.
Okay, thank you. Does she have anything else to say?
She doesn't have anything else to say.
Yes, okay.
She just wants to get that money back.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Ara Manugian.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council members, staff. My name is Ara Manugian, and I want to share with you some really good information that we learned last week after the City Council meeting, where we had an appeals hearing on the AT&amp;T that wanted to place polls or is gonna be placing polls and so on. We had the good fortune of gathering in the lobby area on the ground floor, and we happened to see Mr. Jonathan Kramer, who is the consultant for the city of Glendale on the telecommunications issues. And fortunately, Mr. Kramer was willing to share with us some information, and that information, I'm not gonna get into the details of this information, but what it comes back to is that there's a lot of misinformation, and there's a lot of good information out there. And it's really important that our community know what's going on in the city of Glendale. And as we discussed in a couple meetings, a couple meetings before this, Mr. Garbedyan, we discussed about a study session, and I'm coming back to that again for one reason. First of all, when we had the request for a study session, if you look back on the videos, you had mentioned that after the appeals hearing, we would decide whether we're gonna call for a study session or not. And I'll tell you what the value of a study session will be for the city of Glendale. There's two things. One is, because there's a lot of misinformation out there regarding the Telecommunications Act, and in fact, we attended a Ninth Circuit Court hearing on Monday, yesterday, and the information that came out in that hearing is very valuable to the city of Glendale, especially since you're facing this 5G rollout, and you believe that you have no rights, you have no ability to stop this from happening, when in fact, if you did attend that hearing, you would have learned a lot about the different nuances of the FCC regulation that does give you the authority to prevent this dangerous rollout. And I say dangerous, because we already know, and we, I think we've already kind of agreed that the RF that's coming from 4G and 5G has been proven to cause health issues and environmental issues. And one thing that Dr. Kramer did say was, we're in the wrong venue, which I don't believe we are, but he did say we should go to our Congress representative, and with that said, I want to let you know that I am actually a registered candidate for the 28th District for Congress, this upcoming election. And one of the things that is on my issues is the FCC authority, that they're overstepping their boundaries, that as a representative of Congress in the 28th District, which is Glendale, Burbank, parts of Hollywood, Pasadena, Lock Niata, and La Cressena, I'm prepared to take those issues on. So I would encourage you, again, to consider having a study session, and this is for information purposes. Invite Dr. Kramer, we'll bring our specialists, and let's enlighten ourselves, and let's take our powers back from the FCC that we actually do have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Divine?
I'd like to suggest that maybe you and your group organize a meeting or a session and invite us, and the council members that are available will attend. I'll attend, and we can sit down and chat.
Okay.
You take the lead on this.
I appreciate that, but again, because this is something that is very official in terms of the city of Glendale and this information and misinformation that's going around, that I really think that it's beneficial. Other cities have done this, and it's to enlighten your community, our community here in Glendale, of what's going on, and that's what a study session is about. And it's a very...
631 unimproved parcels within the city. We inspect these unimproved parcels through our contractor with LA County. Everything on this declaration list I have in front of you are people who have already received a letter from the county with notice to abate. What this declaration does for us and for the city and what the hearing will on the 25th do will be allow us via our contractor to go actually onto the property and clear it if they have not cleared it themselves. This is something that we do do annually. The notices did go out on February 1st and of the 631 parcels, the, all of them will have the opportunity either to come on the 25th if they have any questions or comments or there's other ways for them to contact the county or us directly to ask questions about specifics about both the abatement and any questions of why they're on the declarations.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Devine.
Who cleans up the, who does the abatement? If they don't, do we do it?
If they, if they do not, we have a contract with LA County and we utilize LA County to do it. We can also on some, depending on the scope of the work, we can use GYA. We do have the ability to use our GYA folk to do that as well. It really depends on the scope of, of the cleanup.
And then how, how does that come, add to their tax liability?
The, if there's another meeting that comes in summer where we actually will put it on their tax liability at the end of the year and that's when we will propose it and will be accepted also when council, a separate meeting when we do that.
And then we're reimbursed for the work that?
We are reimbursed, 100%.
Okay, great. That's what I wanted to know. Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Yes, second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajianian.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Cintero.
Yes.
Garpetian.
Yes.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes. Thank you, Chief. Next item.
See would be city attorney regarding amendments to the city municipal code pertaining to the lobbyist registration requirements and disclosure requirements for council members, applicants and individuals appearing before the city council of familial, business and community organization relationships. See one introduction of ordinance amending title one of the city Glendale municipal code to add organization, relationship between council members, applicants and individuals seeking government entitlements, awards or determinations before the city council amending title two to add chapter 2.35 relating to lobbyist registration requirements and amending section 2.36.040 pertaining to boards and commissions. Two would be resolution establishing fees related to lobbyist registration. Three, resolution amending the citywide fees resolution regarding administration citation fine amounts for lobbyist registration requirements and amending the citywide fee schedule to add violation subject to fines for lobbyist registration requirements.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, in furthering its goal of enhancing and ensuring transparency efforts by the city, the city had a, council had a discussion regarding lobbyist registration and these disclosure requirements related to familial business and organizational relationships. And this is in line with the council's other efforts to ensure transparency in government, including our campaign contribution ordinance and our ordinances related to donations from developers and that sort of thing. So council had this discussion, provided us some direction. We have prepared the ordinance pursuant to the council direction. Ms. Martrosian will go through the, the elements of the ordinance. We beg your indulgence for a little bit. We're going to get into the details a little bit on some of these definitions just so that we're all clear about what it is we're talking about and the council will be able to provide us any additional direction as you deem appropriate. With that, I'll turn it over to Doreen.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Najarian, council members. My name is Doreen Martrosian. As Mr. Garcia indicated, we are here to present for the city council's consideration and direction and ordinance which will implement our lobbyist registration requirements and disclosure requirements for certain relationships. We have put together a presentation for you. The first section, the first part of our presentation covers lobbyist registration. Some of the definitions we'd like to go over of our proposed ordinance, lobbying is any, anyone or any action that's influencing or attempting to influence a city official through either direct or indirect communication for the purpose of influencing a legislative or administrative action. Now lobbyists are defined as any individual who receives compensation and we'll talk a little bit about the definition of compensation by being employed, retained or under contract to lobby. A lobbyist firm, this is a revised definition that we're presenting to the city council. We have presented you with a revised ordinance that highlights what, we have revised, we, after some thought and consideration, we thought that this would be a better fitting definition. A lobbyist firm is defined as a business entity that receives or becomes entitled to receive any compensation for the purposes of lobbying and employs one or more lobbyists. Now compensation could be any economic compensation or it could be anything of value and we will have examples later on to go over different scenarios and anything of value could be a loan forgiveness, property, season tickets and we'll have examples for that. Client is defined by any person or entity that compensates or contracts with a lobbyist on whose behalf the lobbying occurs. City official would be any elected or appointed officer of the city. It would include council members, board members, commission members, department directors and any city employee who is required to file a Form 700. And the reason that we included the employees who are subject to Form 700 is because those employees hold positions that are, that have some decision-making ability. So that's why we included those employees in the definition of city official. So now, now some examples of non-monetary compensation. A client gives lobbyist season tickets to the Dodgers for the lobbyist services. So on our sample of forms that we have attached to our report as exhibits and those are samples only, once council provides us with direction and, and should an ordinance be introduced and adopted, then we will definitely go back, revise those forms to fit the specific needs and purposes of gathering information. Another example would be a lobbyist who's a debtor to the client that he or she represents on a previous loan and the client agrees to forgive the loan balance in return for the lobbyist services to influence city action or decision. So that too would have to be reported as compensation. Lobbyist registration would be annual. The initial registration fee would be $31. The lobbyist must register under the proposed ordinance within 10 days of qualifying as a lobbyist and there are two ways that one can qualify as a lobbyist. One is when the lobbyist is retained or employed by the client when the contract is made and the second one is when the lobbyist receives compensation. Annual renewal fees are $15 and amendments to the lobbyist registration is $15. Now the registration information for individual lobbyists requires the name, contact information for the lobbyist, the client's name and contact information, the amount, whether it's monetary or non-monetary compensation received or to be received for lobbying services and a description of the subject matter of the lobbyist engagement. Lobbyist firms would be required to provide the same information. In addition, they would be required to provide the name of all owners, partners, shareholders in the, in the firm. Quarterly reports, lobbyists and lobbyist firms would be mandated to file quarterly reports on forms provided by the city. The information included in the reports would be, again, information about the lobbyist and the lobbyist firm, so the same as what's on the registration form. Additional information includes the total compensation promised or received from each client. We will have ranges on the form, 0 to 500, 501 to $1,000 and so forth. Now contacts made with the city officials for the purposes of lobbying, they would have to state how many contacts they've made. Then again, we would provide a range, one contact, two to five, six to 10, over 10 contacts, a brief description of the items that the lobbyist is lobbying for. We do have some exemptions and we will discuss later, we'll have examples and we are looking to council for direction on these exemptions. Now these are activities that are not considered lobbying activities within the ordinance as presented. A public official who contacts city officials and is acting within his or her capacity. News reporters who are gathering information to report. State licensed architects, licensed engineers, licensed attorneys, other licensed professionals retained for a specific matter. And the reason behind this exemption is because these individuals are already licensed through the state, so we didn't want to impose yet another licensing requirement. However, we are seeking council direction on this item as well. Persons whose attempts to influence city action are limited to only appearing at public hearings to present writings to be considered at the public meeting only. These individuals would be exempt. This means that the individual would only appear at the public meeting, address city council, produce the material he or she wishes the city council to consider and would not have any additional contacts other than the public hearing with the city council members. Persons representing themselves relating to their own properties and businesses and persons whose communications relate to an MOU for different associations.
If I could just add, so on that one dealing with the public hearing, the idea there is that somebody's only contact with the public officials is to be here in public to speak and with this, for example, if it was an architect presenting a design to the city council and it's not, there's no meetings that occur, you know, the whole purpose of the ordinance is to put the sunshine on meetings that are occurring outside of this context, the exception fits that bill because you're already having people do that. So that, again, that's certainly within the council's purview to require that.
Mr. Garpetian.
Yes. Let's say there's an architect or an attorney who wants to meet with a council member. What if they set up a meeting through the city and have a meeting at the city with the staff present? Is that, is that allowed or is not allowed? I, I want to understand where we're going with this whole thing.
Well, sure. It's allowed, but it would require lobbyist registration. They, at the point without, and I should, I should say with this exception, if it's just, if it's just the architect, as written, it wouldn't apply because they're going to be exempt. But if the council wants to include architects and engineers and attorneys as those required to file a lobbyist registration, then lobbyist registration, there's no, other than the prohibited conduct that Doreen's going to go through in just a second, there's no prohibited conduct in terms of not being able to meet, it's just a matter of disclosure.
Okay. Let me ask you another question because I believe there are two kinds of lobbyists. One is that they lobby for their clients for a contract or an RFP that's out there or they're lobbying for their clients like such an architect who wants to build a house, a guy who wants to build a house, hires an architect and the architect contacts the city council members. What's the difference between the two? One, my understanding was they can't even contact, when the RFP is issued, the lobbyists are not allowed to contact the council members.
In, in many of the RFPs that we have, we will have a prohibition, not all of them. Just depends on the nature of the RFP, the level of discretion that will be vested in the council once you're making that decision, those sorts of things. But yeah, many of the RFPs, we do have, we have a specific requirement, so that's a little bit beyond the scope of that because this is just about the registration process.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
The ordinance also contains prohibited conduct and those conducts are intentionally deceiving the city official, basically lying to city officials, acting or not acting in a matter to place a city official under personal obligation. An example of that would be personal favors to the city officials so that the city official then feels indebted to the lobbyist. Blackmail threats would all fall under that category. Causing any communication to be sent to a city official in the name of a fictitious person or a group. That again goes to deceiving the city official or making representations or sending communications on behalf of the group when that group isn't even aware that such communication is being sent. And making representations that the lobbyist can control a city council member or a city official's decision. An example would be guaranteeing a client that a council member will do whatever the lobbyist says the council member will do. Now violations and punishments, we have the, the standard violation enforcement, code enforcement provisions that we have for all of our Glendale municipal code violations. They consist of administration, administrative enforcement via our administrative citations, civil action and criminal enforcement. And criminal enforcement would be a misdemeanor proceeding under our code. With that, we have some additional items for clarification and consideration and council's direction. The first item is should in-house salaried employees of businesses whose function is solely to communicate, do public outreach and communicate with cities and city officials be exempt from registration. Now what this means is this is a situation where there, there are developers or rather large companies, corporations where they employ a full-time salaried employee in-house and that employee's function is to do public outreach and lobbying. Our request for direction is whether council is desirous of exempting such employees, such organizations from registering as lobbyists or whether they should be included in the registration process. The next consideration which we're seeking direction on is whether there should be a threshold to qualify as lobbyists. Now we've looked at different cities and most do not have thresholds, some do have thresholds. An example of having thresholds would be you are deemed a lobbyist if you receive an X number of dollars, for example, $5,000 from clients or clients in aggregate. Or you are deemed a lobbyist if you engage in an X number of hours of lobbying per month or per quarter. So that's another area that we're seeking direction from council.
And just to highlight that, I think we heard from the last discussion that we have with the council that we want it known as soon early as possible and someone has signed up to be a lobbyist so before any council member or any city, other, other city officials meeting with somebody, that information has been disclosed. If you have a threshold, there might be a lag in that sort of, that, that knowledge being, becoming known.
Mr. Garpetian.
And the way to find out if they are hired by the company, lobbyist is hired is for them to show when the contract was signed?
They, they fill out the lobbyist registration.
Sorry?
They would fill out, councilmember Garpetian, they would fill out the lobbyist registration. They do not necessarily have to attach any exhibits to the registration. We would take them at their word that they entered into a contract. It's one of two things. It's the earlier of when the contract is signed or when they receive compensation.
So before contract is signed and compensation, they received any compensation, they can come out and lobby for two, three, four months and then two months later they go sign a contract and that's, that's where the clock starts at that time?
Mayor Najarian, councilmembers, councilmember Garpetian, the clock would start if they received compensation even without signing the contract. The contract could be verbal. They would have to complete a lobbyist registration requirement, a, a form as required. If they were to sign a contract which promises compensation on a future date, they would still have to register.
But in any event, they have to register before they do conduct any lobbying activity in Glendale?
Yes, within 10 days of either earlier of those two things occurring.
Okay. Thank you.
Excuse me.
Yes, Mr. Agajianian.
There, I mean, is, on page four it says when the lobbyist receives compensation as we were discussing a little bit earlier. What happens if it's conditional, like if this project is approved, then they get the money? So is it the person lobbying?
Mayor Najarian, councilmembers, councilmember Agajianian, yes. A conditional, as long as the lobbyist enters into an agreement with the client to conduct lobbying activities, he or she must register.
So whether they're promised the income or they're, they've received it, they're required to register to lobby before they engage in any lobbying?
That even they won't get the money, let's say they don't.
Right. But they've been promised the money, you get my project approved and I will pay you X amount of dollars. They're required to register at that point in time.
Okay.
Okay.
Now, the next two items are related, so all addressed on both, number three and four on the slide. Should compensation be deemed payments received or payments promised as well? And should lobbyists register upon becoming employed or when they actually engage in lobbying? So the first portion of the question is what we addressed in our comments, should, should a lobbyist who's promised compensation still be required to register the way that our ordinance is presented currently? Yes, they would require to register. And the second portion is should the lobbyist register within 10 days of being promised a compensation, entering into the verbal agreement or the written agreement or receiving the compensation? Or should the lobbyist wait to register when he or she starts conducting lobbyist activities? The difference would be if a lobbyist is retained today, however, the lobbyist is not expected to reach out to city officials, have meetings with them, communicate with them two months from now on a project or on legislation that the lobbyist is retained to influence, then under the current ordinance, the lobbyist has to register within 10 days of today when one of the qualifying events occur. The other alternative for city council's direction is whether we would not have the 10 days mandatory registration from the date of the compensation or the agreement and allow the lobbyist to register when he or she actually anticipates making contact with city officials. It could be two months from the date that the contract is made. So those two items again are before the city council for consideration. And with that, we move on to the second portion of our presentation which are the disclosure requirements. I don't know if city council is desirous to have a.
Just keep going.
Keep going?
Yeah.
Okay. So the second portion of the ordinance amends the Glendale municipal code to add disclosure of familial, business and community organization relationships. The general requirement is that the council members, applicants, and they're defined, which we'll go through the definitions in a moment, and specified disclosing parties are required to disclose familial, business, including past business relationships and organizational relationships between council members and the applicants or the disclosing parties who are appearing before the city council for actions to be taken by city council. Now an applicant is defined in the proposed ordinance as any individual, person, entity or organization that makes an application to the city for any award, entitlement, determination or action and appears before the city council for that action. The applicant definition includes an appellant who is appealing any determination before the city council for consideration. A disclosing party is the applicant or anyone on the applicant's behalf. It could be a friend, it could be an attorney, anyone who is appearing before the city council to advocate in favor of the applicant or the applicant's position. If there's a relationship and we'll talk about what the relationships are, that individual would need to make a disclosure.
Question. Mr. Garpetian.
So if you have an appeal on a case, any case, right? So people who come and speak for or against, they have to disclose that too from the audience?
Councilmember Garpetian, if they're public speakers on the matter, no. However, if they're appealing on behalf of the appellant, if they're an attorney representing the appellant and they have a relationship, they would have to disclose a relationship. If they are appearing to speak in favor of the appellant, to speak in favor of the appellant's project hypothetically, if we're discussing a project entitlement and there's a relationship that needs to be disclosed, they would need to make that disclosure.
Thank you. Ms. Devine.
So with the council member, right? If the council member knows who they are, has worked with them or has any kind of relationship, they would have to disclose?
Absolutely, yes, councilmember Devine. The disclosure is on both parties. Now the definitions of family member, a family member is a person related to the council member within the first degree by blood or by marriage. And relationships by blood are father, mother, son, daughter, siblings, grandparents, aunts, uncles, first cousins. And we've provided some examples. The owner of a property before the city council is the cousin of one of the council members. Disclosure would be required at that point. Or the appellant before the city council is the uncle of one of the council members. Disclosure would be required at that point. By marriage, relationship by marriage would include spouse-in-laws, father-in-law, mother-in-law, son-in-law, daughter-in-law, siblings-in-law, stepchildren, step-siblings. Examples would include the owner of a property before the city council for consideration for an, of an entitlement is the daughter-in-law of one of the council members. Disclosure is required. The same would go if the applicant before the city council is the step sibling of a council member. Disclosure would be required.
Did you leave out brother-in-law?
Brother-in-laws? They're right.
We didn't mean to.
What do you mean?
Okay. Include brother-in-laws.
All-in-law, yes.
Because that's an issue where I sometimes have identified and been recused in closed session items regarding litigation.
A business relationship is defined in the proposed ordinance as a former co-ownership partnership or any other form of joint ownership in the preceding five years between a council member and an applicant or an individual where each of them owned 10% or more. Now the 10% is a number that we came up with. We looked to council for direction. It could be any percentage, any number, same with the number of years. Examples would be an appellant appearing before the city council, used to own a bakery jointly with one of the council members, the bakery was sold three years ago. That's within the five years. It was joint ownership. Each of them had 50% ownership. They need to disclose that relationship. Another example, I won't go through all of them, the last one, a property owner appearing before the city council relating to a zoning decision, jointly owns rental properties in another state with one of the council members. That, that relationship would still need to be disclosed even though it's in another state.
Would that conflict you out? If you had a business five years ago with somebody and you sold it?
Councilmember Garpetian, that would not necessarily conflict you out. These definitions are in addition to the FPPC definitions that would potentially cause a conflict. This is only for disclosure purposes. That, that scenario would not conflict you out.
But what's the purpose of disclosing? I, I don't have a problem with that, I just want to understand it. What's the purpose of disclosing if you had a business, an apartment building with somebody six years ago or five years ago and you sold it and you disclose it to them? What's the purpose of it if it's not going to conflict you out?
Councilmember Garpetian, it would be.
Transparency.
For transparency purposes.
Just so people know.
Five years ago?
Five years.
Again.
I would want to know. Let's put it this way, I would want to know. As a decision maker on council, I would want to know if someone who's coming before us was a former business partner of anyone on council and I would, I would disclose that my, I would feel obligated to disclose that myself if that situation occurred. Not to conflict me out, but just to be transparent so it not be reported on next week, oh, well, so-and-so was business partners, so-and-so, that's why he did it, so.
Is that going to be part of our campaign disclosures too? If somebody, you know, husband and wife gave you $1,000 each, going to go back and disclose that five years ago? I'm, I just want to understand it. I'm not, I don't have.
No, campaign contributions are not considered, generally not considered disqualifying except under our code where we've made these, what is it, six month and six month or the, the year back?
Yeah.
The, the year back.
Year, 12 months.
It's 12 months and 12 months, absolutely two years. It's not, it's not six months, two years. Okay, we'll discuss it. All right. Thank you.
Disclosure procedure for council members, it's at the time the item has been read into the record, so the council member would make the disclosure on the record. And for applicants and disclosing parties, it's prior to the time of the city council's consideration of the, the matter. We have attached a sample disclosure form. The applicant could, or the disclosing party, they both would be subject to the disclosure. They would complete the form and submit it to the city clerk presiding over the, the council meeting or at any time prior to the meeting, they would complete the form and submit it to either the city manager's office or the city attorney's office or the city clerk's office. In the event of nondisclosure, again, we're not enforcing this via admin sites or civil or criminal enforcement. However, in the event of nondisclosure, the proposed ordinance has a provision that states that the city council's action, subject to the required disclosure by council member, may be deemed void at the option of the city council as a result of the nondisclosure. And we said may because the determination of whether the, the action should be void has to be made on a case-by-case basis with the assistance of the city attorney because there are certain decisions that require finality. If they're land use, entitlement decisions, there has to be finality if the, the applicant or the party needs to take further legal action. And with that, we look forward to your questions, comments and direction.
Mr. Agajianian.
I have a question. Everything is around city council member. What happens with the commissioners? I don't see that the commissioners, if they're, this last page is all, everything.
On the disclosure information, we, we did focus on the council because that was the direction we got to have it as related to council decisions, a decision to come before council and those relationships with council members. It's, it's a, I guess that's a policy call for the council as well. Just note that it, there's more enforcement, I mean, more sort of monitoring, more staff time. There are a lot of commissions that we have, so that, just keep that in mind. But I guess at the end of the day, it's, it's the council's.
Well, there are certain commissions.
But they go in front of commissioners first. So then what happens? I mean, it's okay, they decide and the item would not come.
Keep in mind, lobbyist registration applies across the board to all city officials that, that file a Form 700. So that's the council, that's all the boards and commissions, that's, that's the, and all the employees that file Form 700s, which is a big group. But, you know, we leave it to the council's discretion how you want to handle the disclosure part of it relative to the boards and commissions.
So there are certain commissions that have greater authority than others. Some are merely advisory, some like the planning commission or the DR. Some, like the Planning Commission or the DRB, have a different level of authority matching that of almost the City Council in terms of--
Or more. The item doesn't come--
In terms of approving entitlements. So, I would like to see that extend to those. Am I missing? I mean, so, arts and culture, not so important. GWP?
No, it is. Because they have $7 million in their account. I mean, they're--
But that's advisory to council, is it not? Or do we give them that?
We gave them two years.
Well, then, let's throw that in then. I misspoke. I think that's the same.
Mr. Mayor?
That's what I'm talking about. Those commissions that have final say, either in entitlements or expenditures, should be subject to this.
You should include the Historic Preservation Commission.
Okay.
There's times when they act as a design review board.
And what about parks?
What about parks?
They have funding, and, you know, we've had an experience. That's one of the reasons that we went through this with commissioners in the past.
I would say any commission that has the ability to make a land use decision or expend funds without the council's input.
Okay. I think that-- And you tell us--
Right.
Which commissions that would--
As I--
Mr. Agajian.
As I said, I brought this up, because most of the items, even, it does not come in front of us. So, the, you know, the emphasis on council members, where I see is everything is happening down the road before we get to the council member. So, definitely, in my opinion, council members should be commissioners and commissioners also, same as council members.
So, with the description that Mr. Quintero--
We have that.
That is them.
Mr. Quintero.
Okay, so I have a number of questions and comments. So, we talked about larger companies and making the decision when they have governmental affairs, people, et cetera. My concern is also smaller companies. We have Glendale companies with seven, eight, 10 people, whatever the number is. There may be someone, maybe more than one person, within that company that needs to reach out to City Council or reach out to commission members, et cetera. Even though it's a small percentage of that person's time, are they going to be required? Or we have to make the decision whether they'll be required to register as a lobbyist and go through the paperwork?
So, did you understand the scenario that--
We do. But just so you know, so as written, it's only applicable to, for the lobbyist part of it. The lobbyist, someone who's paid by a third party to lobby, or a firm that employs lobbyists. But again, the firm has to be, their primary business has to be lobbying. So, if the council wants it to apply to a broader group of people, then we can do that something.
Yeah, no, I don't think, you know, that makes any sense, to tell you the truth.
Does not.
Does not.
So, someone from a company who's contacting isn't, an employee of the company is not a lobbyist?
We want to make sure it's not so broad. We're having every company that has business before the city file for lobbyist registration. One way to do it is to say any firm that has a full-time paid lobbyist will also have, their lobbyists will have to register with the city.
Yeah, okay.
And if that's how you want to do it, if that's the direction of the council, we can certainly add that piece of it.
Okay. Then, I am 110% interested in making sure that architects, architects, engineers, and attorneys be part of this ordinance. An architect can do all of his designs and so forth and not be subjected to the ordinance. However, the minute that he or she reaches out to DRB members or City Council members, et cetera, then that person is working as a lobbyist and needs to register. Now, having said that, my question is going to be, that architect that maybe is making $70,000 on the project, or whatever it is, how do they report the fees to the city? They may have spent 95% of their time working on the drawings, and they spent 5%, very important, but still 5% of their time lobbying the City Council. Do they do that percentage and say, I only spent 5% of my time in lobbying efforts, and that's what they report? Or do they report the entire fee? That's another decision we have to make.
Mayor Najarion, council members, council member, Quintero, they would, the recommendation would be, again, it's a policy decision up to City Council, but the recommendation would be that they report the percentage that they spend on lobbyist activities.
Okay. But I do, look, to me, the one thing that we are, you know, in all of my years serving on the council, probably 98% of the lobbying that's taking place has been people that have land use issues before the city. And so, to, because they have a license and they report to the state, so what? I mean, they're still trying to pursue something with the City Council. So, to not have architects, engineers, and attorneys, we actually had an attorney who's now retired, was very involved in civic activities, happened to sit on a commission here at the city. That person was lobbying all the time. I'm not going to mention any names. That person was lobbying all the time. So, just because you're an attorney, or architect, or engineer, same way, a couple of engineers come to mind that would constantly be lobbying for their projects. So, I think, you know, we have to include them. Then, the next comment would be include the commissions that we've already covered. I like the idea of disclosing relationships, and I'll go further. Not just business entities, but actually nonprofits. Once a year, including the gentleman that spoke tonight, once a year through the CDBG grants, we have hundreds, millions, actually, we have millions of dollars in grants from the federal government that we administer, that's given out to worthy nonprofits in the city of Glendale. I think it's great. It's a great program. I wish we had more money. But those nonprofits obviously lobby the CDBG Commission, lobby the City Council, and everybody else that they can lobby. So, I think we also need to include nonprofits in this approach if we're going to be transparent.
Are you talking about the disclosure? Oh, just to clarify, you're talking about the disclosure of relationship to--
Right.
Or you're talking about not registering?
Well, personally, I think they should register, but at a bare minimum, the disclosure is important, because sometimes the very commissioners, or maybe even council members, have either sit, or have spouses, or someone else sits on the nonprofit that's asking for the money. And that's gone on for--
Can we maybe carve that one out especially then, so the nonprofits that are receiving the CDBG funds will have some disclosure obligation--
Okay.
--if they're going to lobby, as opposed to having them go through all the lobbyist registration? Because that would be--
Okay, that sounds fine.
And I just wanted--
On that subject, I have been chairman of nonprofit organizations for many times, maybe 30 years, as council member, everybody knows, actually. But I never received any compensation to go and talk to somebody for that nonprofit. One example was Armenian Society of Los Angeles. I was trying to get a good deal for the society, but I haven't been paid a penny. I was just the chairman, so I was doing my, you know, society duty and trying to get better deals from the city. Or for that purpose, I go and visit others. Then what happens? Lobby?
But that's not, but that's not the CDBG. You were in a--
No, I mean--
--real estate deal trying to--
Right, with the city.
Compensation, yeah. But that was different.
Still, where do I stand with the city? I'm a lobbyist, or I'm--
So, if I would understand, if you're advocating on behalf of your own organization--
Yeah.
--then you don't have to register as a lobbyist. However, if I sit on the board of that organization, I would have to say, oh, by the way, I'm a member of the Iranahai Mutune, and Varej is before us advocating for a land swap. I think it was a land swap at that time.
So, that--
So, that would be a disclosure, not necessarily a registration on behalf of someone that's doing it for themselves.
Correct. I think that already falls within the organizational disclosure--
So, is doing that, would that mean that if you are sitting on an advisory board of a nonprofit, you would be ineligible for CDBG, because you would automatically be--
I think you're getting a little bit out--
I know, I know. It's getting too complicated.
Well, wait a minute. Say that scenario again.
Well, let's say that if I sit on an advisory board, would I be ineligible to be on CDBG? Because I would be lobbying for my, of course, for my nonprofit to get CDBG funding.
Yeah, I think you should not be allowed to do that.
We already have a prohibition in our code on that--
Oh, do you?
--for members of nonprofits.
That's a conflict of interest, basically. We have that already.
We want to carve out for that, though, already. If I could just briefly touch on the point regarding Councilman Quintero's discussion on the architects, engineers, and attorneys, and I just want to, you know, provide the information that in the context of the architects and the designers that prepare projects to come before DRB, for example, the way it's worded now, if we make them eligible, or make them subject to lobbyist registration, they, you know, they meet, in fact, we encourage them to come meet with the staff--
Exactly what I was asking.
--who may be Form 700s. So, a lot of them will become lobbyists by virtue of this. So, we just, you know, I just want to make sure that you're clear about that, and you're okay with it.
Yeah, look, and I'm very clear about that, and I'm very comfortable with that. I'm not impressed that they're an architect and they're lobbying staff members or anybody else, or attorney.
Throw attorneys in.
Right, and they're not--
They're not earlier either.
They're not. I mean, they are lobbying--
I agree with that.
--100% on behalf of their project. They need to register, that's all. Now, my only question is, how are we going to kind of figure out, you know, the idea of attaching money to it? That's not going to be so easy to establish, but whatever, at least we've established the fact that they're lobbying on behalf of whatever the project--
And there may be difficulties. I mean, architects may say, well, I get paid a lump sum to get the project through.
Yeah.
We'll have to figure that piece out. Some of it will be, I don't want to say honor system, but it'll be relate, we will be relying on the reporting of the particular, you know, designer slash architect who's presenting the project.
And the point, when I raise this, wasn't to find the exact dollar amount--
No, right.
--that they're using, but to understand the scale--
Yeah.
--and the scope of their involvement for their client when they come to the city. And the idea is that this would be kept in a database or a spreadsheet that council would be made aware of. I mean, the whole point is that we know that, you know, I get the call from John Smith, and I say, John Smith, let's see, is he, oh, my gosh, he's lobbying for this trash company. Okay, so that's a much different, that's the benefit to the council members, that you know at the beginning who this person is, that he's a serious lobbyist, he's, let's say, it's 10, 20,000 or something, that he's, that you know who his client is, and you act accordingly in your discussions, in the time that you spend, in the, if you're going to bring staff into a meeting and be perhaps a witness to any of the discussions that go forward.
So, in the case of the dollar amount, what they have to write, like, if it's an architect, and he's working on the project and trying to convince the council member that this is a good project, does he have to write an amount there? It's very hard to say how much he's--
It should be a best, it should be a best effort, best estimate, so.
Mayor Najarion, council members, council member Agajian, we can provide ranges. One of the sample forms, it has ranges. It would be $0 to $500, $501 to $1,000. So, all they would have to do is have their best estimate and complete or check one of the ranges.
Okay.
Well, and you could see that, you know, let's say, 200 hours might not be unusual for a good-sized project, CAD-designed, everything else. And then maybe that person only spends three hours or two hours lobbying the council or DRB, then that's kind of the percentage that they spend on lobbying, so.
Mr. Garpetian.
So, if they disclose it's $1 to $500, $1 to $500, or what's the, does that change the registration fee that they have to pay?
Councilmember Garpetian, no, it does not.
But what's the point of knowing how much involvement?
The point is--
See what I'm saying?
The point is, for me--
No, I want to understand, because it's pointless to me. I mean--
It shouldn't be pointless. It should let you know the seriousness and the intensity that this person is dedicating to the issue.
Okay.
As opposed to just, eh, you know, I'm just supposed to make a phone call, it's 100 bucks or 500--
No, no, no. We're talking about professionals, an attorney group, I don't know, architects. An architect is hired to design a house, let's say, right? He's hired to design a house, he's getting paid to design a house, fully paid. Now, he says, my involvement in the city is my $10,000, or $500 lobbying time, right? But we are asking them to have a log or a good faith estimate as to how much time they spent with the city?
Mm-hmm.
We know that, because they come lobby us, right? And what is, okay, let's say they're honest, and they said, we spent 10 hours with the staff and DRB people, as well as the council, right? And it's all disclosed. Okay. Then what? Or they said, they lied and said, it's five hours, and it was 10 hours. Then what? I understand, I do understand, and I agree with the fact, the fundamental, you know, what we want to do in here, that we want to understand who's lobbying the, and I want to know, because we had that before, and they said, oh, no, we're not, we're not doing anything. But if there's an architect, it's hired to design a house, and he comes to the city, meets with staff, and then he goes to the council, because we wanted to, you know, in the past, that's how it was, meet with one council or two council member. And they would meet with council members. That's why I said, if the meeting is held in the city with staff present, right? Then, that architect is not a lobbyist. I don't know, we call it lobbyist. To me, lobbyist is a guy who's hired for a project that the architect is designing. There is a guy who's an engineer who's doing the subdivision, and the guy comes in and presents the case and helps them with their zoning codes and what they can use to get more square footage here or there. That guy's a lobbyist. He comes here and says, look, this guy wants to develop something, here's the design team, and he, the person's job is to present cases, and we have those, right? But as far as an attorney, attorney is an attorney representing a client, I don't know, it's trash business. There are people who lobby for trash companies everywhere. They're not part of the team. Same thing is with the architects, and I don't have a problem with them registering with the city. So, look, you call me a lobbyist, is he an architect or is he a lobbyist? One or the other. And as far as the nonprofits go, if I sit on CDBG board, and I don't know, a nonprofit is before me, that I'm a member of their board, and they're asking for funding, I have to recuse myself anyways. They can't even sit and vote. But every nonprofit to be a lobbyist, and they have to, I think, the main reason of doing this, I'm 100% for it, because we need to know. And one other thing that we haven't talked about tonight, that I would like to talk about and go further, is we talked about having a business with someone. I don't have any business with anybody in the city in the last 20 years that I split up and I have to report. I don't have an issue with that. But how about the companies or outside special interest groups that are funding campaigns as an IE, and then, two years later, they show up here for a contract? How about those? I want, I want to know about that, more than I want to know who had a business eight years ago with anybody that they split up. Maybe they had a bad business relationship. I want to know about these contributions that is pouring into the campaigns, especially in Glendale, that never happened before, never happened in the past. But this year, it's hundreds of thousands of dollars. I want to know about that. Five years later, whoever it is, a group that poured money into whoever's campaign, any candidate, I want to know about the disclosure about that, because there's a lot of dark money that's being poured into elections, and that has to be disclosed. I mean, a nonprofit, you know--
That's the, well, on the campaign, let me say, that's the law of unintended consequences. When we pass the restriction on how much money you could give, the money found its way somewhere else. And like you say, it's become dark money, in the sense, before, maybe organizations or someone would give 5,000 in contributions, et cetera. Now, that person doesn't do that. Instead, he or she contributes to some made-up organization.
Yeah, 5,000, talk about 50,000. So, I think that should be part of the disclosure, too.
Point well taken, except that those contributions are reported on the FPPC forms.
Sure. Sure.
So it's, the point is that it's open. And if I wanted to know, if someone wanted to know, let's say, did I get a trash company IE from last election, 2017, that's out there. You just look at the, on our website, go to our city website, and it shows. Committee to elect Najarian or good government, whatever they call it, this much money, you could definitely use that, say, hey, didn't you?
If you want, if you want familial disclosures to say, my sister-in-law is here and has a case here or whatever, and that's, that's, that's nothing to me versus the big dollar amounts that's being poured into elections, any elections.
So you're saying the candidate, I mean, not the candidate, but the council member should...
Of course, they should disclose it.
Disclose that he was the beneficiary of an IE.
Sorry. No one, I don't want to call.
I was just going to say, I mean, that goes back to the issue of, you know, Citizens United and the recipient, as you noted, they're the beneficiary because they're not the recipient, right? The beneficiary of that independent expenditure had nothing to do with that independent expenditure. If they did, then they required to disclose that and have to report it as a contribution. So what ends up happening, you're putting a, an obligation on a council member at that time who was a beneficiary of, of, you know, a independent expenditure that they didn't have anything to do with. And, and I do have to assess the same point that the mayor did, which is there is a process for that, that information to be disclosed and to be utilized for purposes of discussion of the mayor.
Let me just ask a quick question. We're way off topic here, but let's pursue it. So in, in this particular organization that's funded, do we, and we've got the name, we've got the person that maybe has set it up in Sacramento, but can we find out who contributed to that IE? If, let's say, five individuals each contributed $5,000 to, to this particular IE?
Right.
Can we get the source?
That information is available on the, on the website. So there's two types of IEs. There's one that doesn't receive any contributions, just usually an entity or somebody's PAC who's donating independent expenditures. And there's what's called the recipient committee, which is an entity, that's an entity forum to support or oppose a candidate. And those independent expenditure, the contributions made to those, those recipient committees, which are called primarily forum committees, those are all public record, available on the city's website.
So you would know the names?
Okay. Let me, let me, let me just rephrase my, my question. I understand when there's an IE, the candidate has nothing to do with it, has no control on it, is not aware of it, whatever, right? It's happening. But after the elections, you know, right? And the organizations who contributed to that IE, right? Or is the PAC for that IE, and ends up here asking for a contract, any kind of contract. That doesn't have to be disclosed? Of course it has to be disclosed. If I have to disclose my sister coming in here because, I don't know, she wants to add a room to, to her house, then that company has to disclose it as well. And the council member has to disclose that two years ago, three years ago, I received this much IE, which I had no control over, from this company. It has to be done. Otherwise, the rest is all, you know, very minor stuff. I mean...
I wouldn't be opposed to looking into that.
Yeah.
Because I don't think it's something that, this is a new subject, I think. I, I have no problem with that. That's being, you know, I'd like to, if I have to err, I'm going to err on the side of transparency.
Why don't we do this because we're, one, it is a little bit outside the scope, and so we, we want to look at any constitutional issues associated with that. I mean, the courts have said those independent expenditures are not, they're not tied to the candidate. And so there's little that, that courts can do, that jurisdictions can do to do anything about that. So I don't want to look at that. And it might be more, more appropriately tied to the campaign finance cleanups that we plan to bring back probably in the summer, which we do every summer after an election. It might be appropriate to look at it in the context of those, those cleanups.
I, I, look, I have, I have...
I would support, I would support. Mr. Agdianian?
I hope you are not deciding anything. I think this became very complicated now. I guess I have to think over it for, for a while myself personally. I don't know about others.
I want to decide, come back to it. I think we need to look at everything and incorporate everything in one, one ordinance and constitutionality of the...
It started, it was simple when we started, but then it became a real complicated issue. So maybe we have to revisit this now at a later time.
I appreciate that. But I'd like to go through, staff has been on this for many months. I think there's parts of this that we can continue to work on, but I don't want to put this away. I think it's, we owe it to, we owe it to our residents to become the very, the very best city in terms of transparency and openness. And that's something we should, we can all be proud of. In any forum that we attend, that's something that I think the residents appreciate perhaps more than anything else. Because the number one issue that, that they carry with this trust of this city council and any city council is that things are done behind the scenes, you know, we're, just open up social media. We're all, we're all millionaires. This is Millionaire's Row, don't you know, up here? Because we're taking all this money and we've got sweetheart deals with this person and my uncle came in and I approved his project. I think we should go with the, the issues currently framed before us, but to continue to expand on them with the, with the points that Mr. Garpetian talked about, additional disclosures for IEs and maybe an extended time period as well.
Look, I think, I think that five years that you go back has to apply to IEs as well because if they pour 50, 60, $100,000 into, into a campaign, and then two years later, they're here asking for the council to vote on, on whatever they want us to vote for, right? A contract of any sort, then that has to be disclosed. Although the candidate didn't know at the time.
I agree with you.
But on that, when the council member knows that such a company spent 50, 70, $100,000 on their, on their campaign, so, so should, so should that, that organization disclose that they spent that much money on that?
I agree with you. And that's what we want staff to come back with and see if, I think we understand, I understand what you want. I agree with what you want. The question is, can we do that under constitutional bounds? And if so...
Constitutional bounds? I mean, if, if I have to disclose my sister, I'm, just keep saying my sister. She had never had any, any cases. It's a figure of speech. I'm going to end up on the front page of newspapers tomorrow. The council member Garpetian's sister had a mansion that was...
Your cousin.
Yeah, my cousin. Yeah. But if I have to disclose that the person is my relative, my, my brother-in-law, my sister-in-law, but the guy who spent, received so much money, it doesn't have to be disclosed.
I know. I'm sensing some pushback on what we have before us, and I don't want that. I mean, I want this to go forward. I don't want to dump everything in this and make it so complicated that we're going to put it off. I think that your points are good points, that we'll look into that at a later date, but what we have before us...
But when is that later date? That's what I'm asking.
We just dumped it on her. How soon can we get discussions on that?
As I indicated, my, my goal would be to bring it back.
In the summer.
In the summer. We could do it sooner if council directed this, but I do think, I mean, not only is it, it's not, we didn't specifically notice that discussion as part of this discussion, so we might even have to reintroduce it once, if we were to tie it to this program. I do have, I do have the constitutional concerns because it is that those, those independent expenditures are treated, are constitutionally protected for speech, and so they have to be treated differently. And, but that would be something we could look at. Again, I think just at a very high level, you know, most, any candidate, any council member who was supported by an independent expenditure would have a legitimate claim to say, I had nothing to do with that. So why should I have to disclose that as something that I, I, you know, that I, that I did or that I have that connection or whatever, you know? And there are plenty of cases where someone gets an independent expenditure that they didn't even want. They didn't help.
That goes with the lobbying, too. I had nothing to do with people calling me and asking, for example, or meeting with me and say, oh, this is a good project, for example. I had nothing to do with that. Why should I disclose that?
You didn't. They did. They're the lobbyists. They have to register. They have to say, this is who I'm working for, this is how much I'm getting paid to my best, to my best estimation.
So I don't have to disclose that I met with them? We did that every time.
No, you don't.
Of course I did. Every time.
You don't have to. That's not what this ordinance is about. It's about understanding who is lobbying, how much they're getting paid, and who they're lobbying for. I can give example after example of getting calls from people who I think are my friends, who I think are colleagues in other areas of government. And next thing I know, they're pushing for an applicant who's before the city, and lo and behold, here I am in this meeting that I don't want to take. I don't want to be lobbied before a decision is being made. But had I known that John Smith is working for ABC Aircraft Company, I would not take that meeting. This is what this is all about, to shed, to shed light, sunlight on these lobbying activities. So everybody knows, not just the council, but the public as well. These will be public forums. And just to let people know, we're not saying you can't act as a lobbyist, just identify yourself, come out of the shadows, let's see who you are.
I don't have an issue with that. But I think this, this item is very important to be part of this ordinance because this is the, the worst thing ever that could happen to the city.
What?
Dark, the dark money.
I know, but Mr. Garpetian, we're getting off on a tangent, and I appreciate your concerns. And there's stories worse than what you have to say. There are, there are, there's money coming in that isn't being reported. The money you're talking about, at least you've identified, you pulled it up and said, oh, so-and-so gave so much money to so-and-so. There's groups and organizations that aren't even reporting where their money is coming from or how much they're spending or who they're spending it on, which is a subject for another time. But I want to move forward on this. Ms. Devine?
Okay. I want to get back to about a half an hour ago when we were talking about the attorneys and when, when an attorney or an architect becomes a lobbyist. It seems to me that if we're meeting with staff, they're not lobbying. We're meeting with staff because we're learning about the project. If we have, if they request that we meet with them outside and something goes, happens then, then, then they become a lobbyist, right? Am I right in that?
Well, it's a good point. The, the definition is somebody who's engaged in the, in advocating for, on behalf of, in passage of a legislative or administrative approval. So some council legislation or some administrative approval. It does become hard to draw that line when they're in both, in both, in sort of, they have that, they have that, you know, job to design a building and they have, they have to meet with staff. The hardest part, I think, and I know Mr. Lansford's probably got a lot of heartache right now, is that, that, you know, like as I mentioned, they're, we ask them to come in before they submit an application many times before they get it so they, they understand what the city's requirements are going to be. So that becomes a little bit problematic. So there are probably some ways to, to tweak that if that's the council's desire, to say, we're going to, say, all the activity, pre-application that they do, submitting the, the application, responding to staff's comments, wouldn't be lobbying until they, maybe a hearing is scheduled. That might be one way to do, to skin that cat.
Yeah. Well, that, that's kind of what I, I would, I would like to see done because I, I think that the attorneys and architects and all of those should, should be registered as well if they're lobbying. If they're not lobbying, if they're just meeting with staff and giving us the information on a project, I don't, I don't have any, any objection to that. So I think they should be licensed. You asked about the registration, the compensation be deemed payments received only, or should it include payments promised? Yes, payments promised. Should lobbyists register upon becoming employed? Yes. Not to wait until they have, well, you know, I'm employed, but I'm not going to come to you until later on. I think it should happen at the, right at the beginning. I think there should be a zero threshold. I think that's, you know, I, I may be criticized, I don't know if I, I try to, I like to keep things as simple and straightforward and transparent as they can be. And, and so those are, those are the comments that I have about this. I think you've done a good job. I ask you to raise the fees, but you know, even if you're a lobby, if you're an attorney or an architect, the fees aren't that much. I guess it's just the paperwork that becomes an impediment, but...
Right. And I think as we may have mentioned to you, given this is our first review of this, we had to estimate how much time it will take staff to do all the things that we're required to do, estimate how many we think we'll get. As, as it goes through, we'll be monitoring how much these, how much time is really spent on it. And the fees could go up, not because we want them to, but just because they'll, they'll need to go up to compensate for that time.
So, Mayor, those are my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Devine. Mr.? I just think reporting the money portion of it, I think is really going to be difficult. I mean, I guess it'll be the lobbyist kind of deciding what it is that he or she wants to report, but that's going to be very difficult to keep track of, and especially smaller, smaller companies. Mr. Garpetian?
One last thing that, when this thing comes back in summer, the, the reverse effect of the disclosures, when there is a, an ironic campaign, you know, people come to your fundraising and they give you a $500 check. You, you don't know every single person that comes and say, hey, we like what you say and here's a $500 check. And then six months later, they end up here as an applicant on a project or an issue that they knew you may not be on the same page with them. So they gave you a $500, it's like a trap. So there has to be something to look into for the future as to how, how...
I will happily support that.
How do we get out of that, you know? Either we can return the funds or what have you, then I think that's, it goes in the same line as to, I didn't know they're going to bring the project, so they gave me $200 and I have to recuse myself. And it's happened in the past.
I look forward to that, that discussion. That's something that is...
If there are no other discussions, I support the motion. I mean, I, I move the item.
So we have an introduction at 8C1. Who would like to introduce it?
Can, before I introduce, can we go through the changes that we heard so that we're all...
Okay. We did make modifications.
Yeah. And then, and then we'll, the other two resolutions will just hold until we bring the ordinance back for adoption. So the disclosure obligations will also apply for the, the commissions within the city that have land use authority, authority to spend money. Will include a requirement that lobbyists who are full-time employees of corporations that have other activities besides just being lobbyists will also have to register. We will modify the exception for, or basically eliminate the exception for architects, engineers, and attorneys, but we will craft the language so that it'll be only for that activity that's, that's the truly lobbying. And then all the pre-application meetings, all the meetings with staff to go through stuff will not be included. That'll probably be the trickiest part to drop, but will not be, it's only when something is set for hearing that the, at that point, when the architect or the engineer, the lawyer goes to meet with staff before the hearing or to meet with, to meet with the council members or the commissioners, at that point, they'll be, they'll have that lobbying registration requirement. Specific carve-out for nonprofits who are lobbying before the CDBG, either before the committee or before the council, they will have a disclosure obligation. And then all the other, I think that was, those were the changes that I heard. We'll, so introduce it with those changes and we'll include those in the revision. Did you hear anything else, Doreen?
Just, just so I'm clear, we're including co-membership in fraternal organizations for disclosure.
Yes, that's in there.
Okay. So you've got that. I think that reflects our...
So we just introduce it with those changes.
So let's have a dual, let's have a dual introduction by Garpetian and Devine. And the resolution establishing the fees, we saw them, they're very modest.
We'll bring those back. We'll bring those...
Bring that back at the time of the thing.
We do adoption.
Okay, very good. I think this is, listen, I am so proud of this council for taking this step. A lot of cities don't come close to, I mean, imagine some of those corridor of corruption cities who shall not be named. You know, we are so far above them and we're so trans, this would become such a milestone for the city of Glendale, something we can really be proud about. You can brag about for the next few weeks. And I'll brag, I'll be glad to brag with you.
And Mayor, I'd like to thank our deputy...
Doreen for...
For your work on this. I know you worked on it.
You've had, you had 5G last week. You had, you had campaign. You're, we've been keeping you busy. And thank you to your, your supervising city attorney as keeping you on track and giving you the time to do that. Next item, please.
Next item would be oral communications. There are no cards submitted at this time.
We have no new business? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
We are adjourned.